Sorry about that. Councilmember O'Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Tran?
Here.
Councilmember Dovin?
Present.
Councilmember Kalfenstein?
Here.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brightingam?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. May I ask Assistant City Manager Maria Stipe to do the invocation, followed by Councilmember Cindy Tran to lead the pledge.
Sure. If everybody could please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Heavenly Father, as we meet here tonight to make decisions for our community, may we use only our best skills and judgment as we consider the merits of each matter before us. May we always act in accordance with what is best for our city and our fellow citizens. Amen.
Do you say the flag if you have no more than one chance to be a citizen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, that takes us on to presentations. We have two listed, so we'll start with 1A, Orange County Human Relations Annual Report Update, as presented by Board Member Christian Lopez.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christian Lopez, and I'm a board member of Orange County Human Relations. I'm here tonight to report on some of the work our nonprofit organization has done in the city of Garden Grove over the last year, and present you with our annual report and the 2021 Orange County Hate Crime Report in partnership with the County of Orange. At OC Human Relations, we believe that all people have a right to live free from discrimination and violence, so we provide programs to create safe and respectful communities. OC Human Relations partners with cities to manage challenging human relations issues such as the lack of civil discourse responding to hate crimes and hate incidents, and building positive relationships between police and residents. Cities and schools call regularly to help in community-building efforts and navigating conflict. In this past year, we have seen these human relations challenges continue to impact our community in different ways. Hate incidents and hate crimes remain on a rising trend. Interpersonal conflicts are inevitable, as our communities are adjusting to going back to interpersonal environments. However, we also see tremendous progress and eagerness to address these challenges across our neighborhoods, cities, businesses, and institutions. For example, we engaged in over 100 trained mediators to provide mediation services for Orange County residents. We expanded to 12 restorative schools programs, provided 79 trainings and workshops, facilitated 444 cases involving conflict in middle and high school campuses. We also assisted in some cities with their human relations community and the DEI committee. We are proud of our partnership with the cities, and we are ready to support any additional cities that may have a need to utilize our human relations expertise. This support is possible in the large part because of the City Deues Program. This program was developed 30 years ago with the City Managers Association. Cities across the county can make a per capita contribution to our nonprofits, so that we are able to maintain our capacity to respond and support cities when needed. We hope that the city of Garden Grove will not hesitate to reach out at times when our expertise can help their city. We are pleased to share how we worked with the residents in Garden Grove in our last fiscal year. We mediated 46 court intake cases, 15 community intake cases, and police community mediations in the courts or community where one of the parties was a resident of Garden Grove. In collaboration with the County of Orange County, local law enforcement agencies, schools, community organizations, and residents, our document residents, we document hate crimes and incidents in Garden Grove. There were 21 hate crimes and two hate incidents. 2,484 youths participated in our Bridges Safe and Respectful Schools Program, attended the Support Stop API Hate vigil in the Restorative Schools Program. We brought seven cases through restorative conflict resolution process, and had over 11,073 programs touches into Garden Grove High Schools. We worked to build a sense of community among Garden Grove residents and staff. In conclusion, OC Human Relations has appreciated your city's membership in the City Deues Program, supports schools and cities in building safe and respectful communities, addresses community conflict and strife, sustains our human relations infrastructure to serve cities where crisis situations occur. Together, we can, we are able to contribute to a safe and respectful county, and building the important relationships that can be called upon in times of tension and turmoil should they come. Now, I would like to present this certificate to Mayor to thank for continued support in the City Deues Program. Thank you.
Alrighty, Community, or Presentation 1B, which is a Community Spotlight in recognition of the Technicults.
Item 1B is a Community Spotlight in recognition of the Technicults for winning first place at the First LEGO League Challenge, and Ms. Stipe will provide our Community Spotlight.
Thank you, Ms. Pomeroy. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize St. Columban School's LEGO robotic team, the Technicults, for placing first in the qualifier tournament to advance to the regionals and earn first place in the First LEGO League Challenge Cup. Would the Technicults please come forward? We're going to have you kind of just all assemble along the front here, and you can kind of face the audience. Okay, here we go. The Technicults are part of St. Columban School's new robotics program known as the First LEGO League Challenge Class Pack Program by LEGO Education. The program curriculum explores STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and robotics to help students develop innovative solutions to a real-world problem of a particular theme. This year's First LEGO League Challenge theme was "Superpowered," and teams were asked to explore energy. Where does it come from? How is it distributed, stored, and used? Using their creativity, the Technicults designed and created an innovative project and placed first place in the First LEGO League Challenge Qualifier Tournament last November. In December, the Technicults competed against 42 teams in the regionals and placed third. Determined to compete again, students from the Technicults competed in the First LEGO League Challenge Cup in February and earned first place. Taking part in the First LEGO League Challenge has allowed the Technicults to develop organization, research, and problem-solving skills. The team's hard work and enthusiastic spirit were part of their success as a team and community, said Technicults coach Ms. Calloway. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present the Technicults with certificates in recognition of their recent LEGO robotics accomplishments. Congratulations, and we wish all of them the very best in their future endeavors.
Bring him in for a photo.
Thank you.
Show your certificates, you guys. Open up.
Should he be down there with them? Out of order, alright. Whichever order you want.
You're out of order. No, you're out of order.
Can you get him, Stuart, get him a little tighter? Stuart, get tight.
Far over there, you might want to come take a knee up in front.
There we go. Okay. Okay, now one at me right here, please. One, two, three.
Oh, yeah, that's, take a good look.
Mayor?
May I be allowed to say a thank you?
Oh, okay.
Hold on. Is she? Okay. Okay. I'm Mrs. Calloway. I would like to address the city council to thank you for your recognition in our Community Spotlight. I am Mrs. Calloway, the science teacher and the coach of this amazing team of students. This is my first year in this position, and my first time to have a First LEGO League Challenge team. These students are in their eighth grade year, and this would be their last time to be at the challenge level. They will go to a more advanced level next year. Stepped up, these students stepped up to this competition team with great commitment, and also dedication to expand their knowledge in engineering and robotics. As you have seen, when they collaborated and worked hard, they were able to accomplish extraordinary success in a short amount of time, which usually takes a couple of years to accomplish. We are truly honored to be here tonight, and I would also like to thank my principal, Ms. Gary, and the parents for a wonderful support. And now, I would like one of my team members to speak to represent the students.
Thank you, Mayor Steve Jones, city council, and city staff. My name is Bella Ambada, a member of the St. Columban Technicults, and the granddaughter of the late Rick Lerma. Through this experience, my team has learned so many life skills. This STEM project-based type of learning has taught my teammates and I how important it is to collaborate and to listen to everyone's ideas before making decisions. We've used problem-solving skills and practiced gracious professionalism. We plan on using these types of skills in high school and in our future careers. Thank you so much for putting us in the Community Spotlight for representing the city of Garden Grove. We hope we can be an inspiration for other students to persevere and never give up if learning becomes challenging. Thank you, and God bless.
And I don't want to forget, we have a fantastic co-coach, Cindy Tran. Thank you, Cindy, for all your love and support.
Wow, we have an amazing team. My three children go to St. Columban School, and when my daughter joined the robotic team, we wanted to bring that to St. Columban School. So I asked the parent, and I, some of the parent here, the teacher, and I asked every year. So finally, this year, thanks to our principal, who gave us the opportunity to do this, Ms. Calloway, who is the coach, and she invited me to be the co-coach. Not just being part of the team, but also I try whatever I can to support, and if you could see on the side, we try to support and, you know, our team, name on it there. But anyway, like I mentioned earlier, we have an amazing team, from the principal to the teacher, to, you know, the class coach, and to the parent and to the student. The parent was there whenever we didn't have anything, they'd just step in, we don't have to ask, and they just make us feel so amazing, just keep moving forward. The student during the holiday weekend, they came to my house and worked on it. That just, you know, you just see the passion from them, and so thank you so much for having me as the co-coach, and thank you so much, it made my dream come true. So congratulations.
Alrighty, so that ends presentations. We do have a very special event tonight, so I'm going to go out of order, and we're going to take a brief break. We have a special birthday this evening for Councilmember Cindy Tran. So while her folks are here, I'd like to take this time to take a break, invite everyone to come into the other room and enjoy some cake to celebrate Cindy's birthday.
Thank you.
Made it myself.
We will reconvene the meeting, and that takes us to oral communications. I do have a handful of cards. Three minutes per speaker, starting with Teresa Tran.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Teresa Tran. I am a Garden Grove resident and also the community agent coordinator for a nonprofit called Waymakers. We work with residents of Garden Grove to create a smoke-free environment, especially in housing complexes like apartments in our wonderful city. And first off, I would like to say happy birthday to Cindy Tran. I hope you have a wonderful one. Thank you so much for serving today on your birthday. And also, I wanted to say thank you to George, who we met with last week, I believe. I don't know who's watching this, but I've never met George before. He's actually hilarious, so all the Garden Grove residents should meet him at least once. So you know how amazing he is. And also, thank you so much, Cindy, as well, for meeting with us this week as well. Thank you for being so generous with your time, meeting our interns, chatting with them, and just being excited about having a smoke-free community, just being passionate about actually, how do we make our Garden Grove healthier? So I'm very proud being a District Three person here in my district, or my representative, so thank you. And yes, we especially appreciate your suggestion to do additional outreach to multi-unit housing managers to provide more education to them. And thank you for being willing to say that you would even walk with us and our coalition to talk to the different apartment complexes to encourage voluntary smoke-free policies. It's fantastic, and thank you for doing that. And it means a lot to residents like me and families like the Asaldes, who are in attendance with me, who are also suffering the effects of secondhand smoke. And so a few updates. On March 3rd, our coalition organized a date to reach out to multi-unit housing apartment owners who have not yet adopted a smoke-free policy. Our methodology was to break up our teams into districts and go to door-to-door at these locations and provide educational materials on cessation for people who need help quitting tobacco, and also infographics of the benefits of smoke-free multi-unit housing to the managers. Our team visited a total of 20 locations, and out of the 20 locations, nine of the managers and the owners were on-site and accepted the educational materials. And out of the nine, one of them who was educated actually agreed to implement the voluntary smoke-free policy, so that is fantastic. And for the remaining sites visited, the leasing office did not have a manager on-site, and so we left educational materials at eight locations. And three of them did not have an office in these sites, and so the coalition attempted to outreach them via phone calls. And so one of the challenges working with multi-unit housing complexes is that some of the contact information is not readily available or transparent, and we would love to have some help from our city council to outreach to them, because if we want voluntary policies and we want to improve the lives of residents, one of the best ways is to get managers on board as well. And if we can't reach them, that is an issue. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Diego Elizalde.
Good day, everyone. My name is Diego Elizalde. I'm a 12th grade student in Garden Grove High School District. I've lived in an apartment in the Garden Grove City for six years with my family. I'm here because smoke-free multi-unit housing is important and beneficial to the community. I wanted to tell a story about something I experienced recently. It was a beautiful Saturday afternoon, and I was excited to play soccer with my friends. We decided to meet at the course inside of the apartment complex, but in the middle of the game, we noticed a familiar smell in the air. Someone near us had lit up a cigarette. The smoke quickly waved through the field, and I started coughing. I tried my best to ignore it, but the smell was too distracting and unpleasant. I couldn't help but think about the irony of the situation. Here, we're trying to stay healthy by playing soccer, yet being forced to inhale secondhand smoke from someone on the sidelines. I remember a quote I had once heard. I don't know why they call it secondhand smoke, if I feel like I just smoked a whole pack by just being around it. And oh boy, did that ring the truth at the moment. I couldn't resist, and I bit a bit of humor to the situation. I turned to my friend and I said, "I guess we should have brought our gas mask instead of a cleese today." We laughed. We had a good laugh, but the truth was, the situation wasn't really funny at all. Secondhand smoke is no joke. It can cause serious health problems. That's why it's so important to have smoke-free apartment complexes to protect everyone's health and well-being. When my family and I first moved to our apartment, we were so excited to find a new place to live after being homeless for a while. However, as soon as we stepped inside, we were hit by a strong smell. The middle's all wrinkle or nothin' discuss. The smell of cigarettes penetrated the entire main bedroom, carpet, and vents. We quickly realized that the previous owner must have been a smoker. My parents tried to fix that problem by opening all the windows to let in some fresh air, but it didn't help at all. For months, we were sleeping in the main bedroom, which had the worst smell ever. We were so excited and grateful to find a new place to live, but the living conditions of this new apartment were healthy at all. We were forced to battle against the lingering effects of the previous owner's bad habits. I believe we should make Garden Grove healthier, smoke-free environment where we can enjoy our homes and sport games without having to worry about secondhand smoke. I'm asking the city council to formally start a discussion on multi-unit housing and to put this item on the agenda. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nicholas Dibbs.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, my name's Nicholas Dibbs. I'm a teacher, educator, longtime resident of Garden Grove. I want to echo what the two previous speakers said. You know, this is about wellness, and the importance of smoke-free environment is very important, as are other things. And so I want to encourage the council to put on the agenda in some form, increasing the outreach to the community and having wellness information on the city's website. These are, as you probably know, cyberbullying, digital literacy, and so on are very important. The California State PTA believes it's necessary to develop and inform public of children and adults who will selectively limit media input, carefully select television programming, and who will be able to understand explicit and implicit media messaging. So it says here in this brochure, "Stand Up to Cyberbullying." This is from the Federal Trade Commission, called Heads Up, Stop, Think, Connect, from FTC.gov/... If you go to FTC.gov/kidsonline, and then the Netsetter booklet. So going to that website, these are free publications. Then there's the fentanyl awareness, "One Pill Can Kill" issue, and so on. So I think we need, as you know, I've said this before, we need a youth wellness committee effort. And in some form or another, either as a commission, a committee, a group, whatever, that the city can let us come and have some meetings here and put together outreach for digital literacy, digital wellness, protecting children online, including the smoking issue, you know, having, just, let's have it on the website, a wellness section on the website with resources, and so on. And this fentanyl issue is very important. So I'm concerned about this. As you know, I've mentioned it in the past, and I do want to see a youth wellness advisory group, committee, commission, whatever you want to call it, that the city could have to help network across the silos. That would include parents, educators, children, or not children, but young people who may be in high school who can be peers, and to help get the message out, to have, you know, school people, city people, everybody, and we can involve the community. Because it's not, as you know, it takes a village to raise a child, and that includes the city and the staff, and so on. I do have a quick comment about the financial situation in our country, and that is that our city needs to make sure our investments and our funds are protected in case banks go under. So that means if the federal government has a $250,000 limit of protection through the FDIC, what is our city going to do to protect the millions of dollars we have, which are way above $250,000? So whatever you folks can do, and our city manager can do, to protect these funds so that we can weather the storm that's coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruby Garcia.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name is Ruby, and I'm with the Andy and Aidan Safety Group. I'm the CEO and founder, and our mission is to work with law enforcement to assist special needs families with safety strategies such as crossing the street or calling 911, embracing a better sense of community and support. Outside of our safety events, we are hosting an Autism Day in the city of Garden Grove at Atlantis Park on March 25th from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. This event will be free to all families. It will be a fantastic event filled with love and community with our Garden Grove family. I am so proud of our community partners who altogether pitched in and helped pay for the park. I'd like to take the time to thank all of them, as they deserve to be recognized, the Andy and Aidan Safety Group, Garden Grove Police Department, Tony Nguyen, Special Education Attorney at Law, GGNA, Authentic Community, Kiwanis of Greater Garden Grove, and they really all just jumped in and poured their heart into supporting this event and everything it stands for, and providing donations to make this a better day. We are so grateful for everyone that has shown their support and wanted to show how beautiful our city is and how much we all really do love and care about each other, and how we want to all succeed. Not only will there be a variety of resource stations to learn more about different advocates, programs, and therapies available in our community, but there'll also be food and activities and lots of fun celebrating individuals on the autism spectrum. I'd like to invite you all to attend. I'll go ahead and leave the flyer for visibility, but invite everyone to participate. March 25th at Atlantis Park from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's free, so please come out and support and celebrate individuals with autism. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak who did not submit a pink card? All right, with that, we will close oral communications and move on to successor agency. Matta Clerk, will you please call roll?
Member Bridget Gudman?
Here.
Member Tran?
Here.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Klaffenstein?
Here.
Member Winn?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neill?
Here.
And Chair Jones.
Here. We already did oral communications. Consent item is just receive and file the minutes. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Any matters? Seen none. We will adjourn back to city council, and that takes us on to consent calendar. It's recommended that items 3A through 3H be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Any requests? Call to vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right. Public hearings, item 4A.
Item 4A is a public hearing for approval of the HomeARP allocation plan and substantial amendment number one to the fiscal year 2021-2022 annual action plan, and Mr. Throne is here to give that report.
Hello and good evening, Mayor and City Council members. The purpose of the item before you tonight is to conduct a public hearing and request city council's consideration of the HomeARP allocation plan and substantial amendment number one to the fiscal year 2122 action plan, and to authorize the transmittal of the plan and amendment to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD. On September 20th, 2021, HUD announced that the city of Garden Grove was awarded $3,037,211 in home American Rescue Plan funding, otherwise known as HomeARP. The HomeARP allocation is a one-time award of funds and may be used on eligible activities, including development and support of affordable housing, tenant-based rental assistance, otherwise known as CBRA, provision of supportive services, and acquisition and development of non-congregate shelter. HomeARP funds can only be used to serve specific populations that are housing insecure, which includes the following populations: homeless, at risk of homelessness, fleeing domestic violence, dating violence, stalking, or human trafficking; other populations where providing supportive services or assistance would prevent the family's homelessness, and veterans and family that include a veteran family member. Prior to expending funds, the city must develop a HomeARP allocation plan that outlines the activities that the city plans to carry out. The HomeARP plan requires the city to conduct consultation with agencies and service providers whose clientele include the eligible HomeARP populations. Additionally, the city is required to encourage citizen participation in the development of the HomeARP allocation plan. in the development of the Home ARP allocation plan, and must have the plan available for public review and comment for a minimum of 15 days, and conduct at least one public hearing. Once the consultation and public participation process is complete, the city is required to submit the Home ARP plan to HUD as a substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2122 action plan. Prior to developing the Home ARP allocation plan, the city conducted a thorough consultation process that included interviewing organizations and public housing organizations that serve the Home ARP populations, distributing a survey to local agencies, service providers, and stakeholders that serve the Home ARP populations, consultation with the county's continuum of care, and regional service providers that serve the Home ARP populations. Through this consultation process, respondents identified specific activities as the highest priorities. So the highest priority that was identified were supportive services for the Home ARP populations. The secondary priority that was identified was development of affordable housing, and the largest gap is lack of affordable housing options. After completing the consultation process, the city was required to conduct a needs assessment and identify gaps within the current service delivery system and shelter and housing inventory. During the preparation of the needs assessment, the city used current data from point-in-time count, housing inventory, inventory count, American Community Survey, Comprehensive Housing Affordability Strategy, Homeless Management Information System, and data available through the COC. Given the increase in the city's unsheltered homeless population over the last few years and the number of individuals who are currently experiencing a severe housing cost burden, the city is prioritizing the Home ARP funding on the following affordable housing activities: tenant-based rental assistance and the development of affordable and supportive housing. Regarding the TBRA activity, the city intends to utilize the Home ARP funds as a vehicle to access and secure permanent housing for the city's homeless population. With the Central City's Navigation Center projected to open in fall 2023, there is an anticipated need for rental units that can be the next step for individuals exiting the navigation center. Given the severe need of affordable housing opportunities for the homeless population, the city is planning to allocate $1,290,815 to develop a TBRA program that will assist the individuals exiting the navigation center with rental assistance and wraparound services. The TBRA program will help individuals maintain permanent housing and prevent individuals who are exiting the center from returning to homelessness. Approximately 160 to 170 individuals are anticipated to be assisted, and an RFP will be released in summer 2023 to choose the operator of the program. Now regarding the development of affordable housing, the city is planning to allocate $1,290,815 for the development of affordable and supportive housing for all qualifying populations that were identified. This will require the city to work with a housing developer on either an acquisition and rehab or new construction, affordable, new construction affordable housing project. At least 70% of those units need to be designated to a qualifying population. The remaining 30% can be designated to low-income residents. An RFP will be released in summer 2023 to select the developer. The public comment period for the draft Home ARP allocation plan and the substantial amendment number one to the fiscal year 2122 action plan was from February 24th to tonight, March 14th. Notices were published in local English, Spanish, and Vietnamese newspapers, and all public comments received during the, the public comment period will be submitted to HUD. It is recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing to receive comments regarding the Home ARP allocation plan and substantial amendment number one to the fiscal year 2122 action plan, appropriate $3,37,211 in Home ARP funds for TBRA and the development of affordable housing. Any unused appropriation will be carried over into the, the new fiscal year, 2324. Direct staff to submit the Home ARP allocation plan and substantial amendment number one to HUD, and authorize the city manager to execute agreements and make modifications on behalf of the city. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And I have Maria Gallegos from Michael Baker International here to help answer your questions as well. She was very instrumental in creating the plan before you.
Thanks, Tim. Well done. Colleagues, any questions before we open up for public hearing? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this particular item?
Mayor Jones, members of the council, citizens of Garden Grove, my name is Nicholas Dibbs. I'm going to just speak in general terms. We know that there's a housing crisis, affordable housing crisis. We see it every day, the homeless, no matter what city or town you go to, there's, there's homeless people out there, and we need to do what we can to help them. Now, there are different ideas out there. I do want to throw one out, a couple of things. One is, we have, and I don't know where you're at on it at the moment, but the Willowick Golf Course, it's owned by the city. It's land that's owned by the city, and can any of that land be used for affordable housing? Even though it's in Santa Ana, it's owned by the city. So that could be a, a one good avenue and, and provide green space as well. The other is what we would call a land trust, where cities have done this. They establish some land that will be in trust in perpetuity for affordable housing, so that no matter who comes and goes, that, that land and those structures are used for affordable housing. So if you'd please consider in the plan or in the options to look into the possibility of having a land trust that would be designated in perpetuity for low-income housing. And these have, there's other cities that have done this, and I'm sorry, I don't have the statistics or the information and the details with me, but I'm just throwing it out as an idea, because once it's in the trust, it can't be. The typical model is that a developer develops, let's say, 100 units, and 20 of them are for low, or 15 units are for low-income housing. The land trust idea is, is that 100% of that property is for affordable housing, not just a percentage of it, but the whole thing. And the city owns the land already at the Willowick Golf Course, so if there's any way that that can possibly be in the mix, that might be a good solution, that you have more bang for the buck because you already own the land. And I'm sure the city of Santa Ana would go along with having more affordable housing in partnership with the city of Garden Grove. So those are just some ideas. I'm not an expert on this. I don't pretend to be. I don't know very much about it. I'm just, these are things, ideas I've heard over the years of what other communities have done. And I do think the land trust idea is a good one for you folks to consider in the mix of things, so that, so that we have 100% of the, of the property being used for affordable housing, and includes seniors as well as others and families. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else wishing to speak on 4A? Get in, get in line, buddy.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff. I just wanted to say, I think this is a really interesting component to the navigation, because if you have police navigation and somewhere to go once they turn out, I think it's awesome. Thank you so much. Great job, Tim.
Thank you. Chris.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tim, members of the council, it's Chris Beard, City of Garden Grove resident. Say, I wasn't planning to speak on this tonight, but I'm glad I have an opportunity to do so. I came here for another issue, which has already been brought up in the public matters, public discussion. So I reviewed the plan, and it brought me back to those days of doing what you do now, and I, I want to commend you for going through this. I think it's a very detailed plan. I think it's very thorough. It's thoughtful. It's strategic. There's never ever enough resources to do everything we want to do as a city. But this as a plan, I think, going forward, I just want to come up and say, I support this, and I think you should support it as well. And, and thank you for taking the time to go through it. It, it did really bring me back to those days of going through page by page. And it's, it's very thorough. I commend staff for, for a job well done as well. So I support it, and I hope you do as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. All right, anyone else? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Colleagues?
Just thank you for this, you know, 50-page, you know, summary of this plan. It's a great plan, like Mr. Beard said, and a lot of work has gone into this over the last couple of years. So thank you, everyone, on staff.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right. That takes us on to item five, commission committee matters, consideration of appointments for city commissions. We do have a list, which I submitted to the city clerk of nominations, which I believe was dispersed to my colleagues, and would like to bring that forward for consideration and approval.
I'll move for approval of the submitted list from the mayor.
Call the vote.
Are we doing all of them at once, or?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Now, since that was read off, should you read the names of the various commissions?
Don't do that. It's exactly as you have it.
So the appointments are as follows. Planning Commission: Asia Cunningham, Josh Lindsay, Daisy Perez Castellanos, John Ramirez, Randy Arbghast, Mark Paredes, and Matthew Montano. For Traffic Commission: Ricardo Cepeda, Patrick Catlin, Joseph Loricchia, Jeffrey Sanders, Calvin Van, Lyle Flatabo, Roger Flanders. For Neighborhood Improvement and Conservation Commission: Maureen Blackman, Rosalynn Rubin, Tuan Tran, Julian De Laoe, Matthew Bell, Kay Kearney, James Kester. For Arts, Parks, and Recreation: Andrea Perez, Ted Stevens, Alan Strickland, Cam Mangles, Daniel Gonzalez, Dolores Ruby Garcia, Fernando Cuevas. For the Downtown Commission: Jennifer Stewart, Viet Tran, Catherine, and I'm gonna, I'm not going to pronounce this name right, Amukate, Lynn Nguyen, Elizabeth Deng, Rebecca Wymer, Marilyn Tortolano. For Measure O: Les Malo, Robert Sanders, Chris Beard, Claire Bischoff, Sandy Thomas, Mark Mechanic, and Fernando Ferrer. For the Administrative Board of Appeals: Kathy Lad, Jessica Knight, Andrew Nguyen, Jeff Tacne, and Timothy Brady. And that's all we have.
All righty. Thank you. That takes us on to items for consideration, item 6A.
Item 6A is approval of a cooperative agreement with Caltrans for implementation of a fencing pilot program. And our city manager is going to give that report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you this evening is consideration of a cooperative agreement with Caltrans for the implementation of a fencing pilot project. There's been proactive discussions between the city, Garden Grove PD, SRT, and Caltrans to address the growing influx of homeless individuals seeking shelter along and in the underpass of the Garden Grove 22 freeway, and a high rate of encampment individuals returning to these locations after monthly cleanup efforts by Caltrans. The cooperative agreement replicates a recent pilot program implemented in the city of Placentia. For Garden Grove, two locations have been identified in which a majority of the Caltrans funding of up to $400,000 have been programmed, in which deterrent fencing and some related landscape improvements are proposed. These locations include the New Hope-Trask area, along with the Pierce pedestrian bridge area. The balance of the $200,000 has been programmed for installation of additional decorative paving and gravel on unpaved slopes and narrow areas of other encampment sites that overlap, that overlap the effort being made with the submittal of the encampment resolution grant application, hopefully a successful award in the next 30 or so days. At this time, I'm going to turn over to Chief Alfara for some additional remarks.
Mayor Jones, council members, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity of this grant. I think it's going to be an effective deterrent and tool in our efforts to combat homelessness. You're all aware of the problem we have along the 22 freeway corridor, and recently we actually just had a cleanup over at the New Hope and 22 freeway. I will tell you, there were 54 individuals contacted during those three days, and unfortunately, even though outreach efforts were offered to them, none of those individuals accepted those resources and outreach efforts. With encampments, we all know when you get a large group of individuals who come together and, you know, in an area for an extended amount of time, you're going to start having unsanitary issues, health issues. We have fires that get started by our homeless population that obviously can get out of control and burn adjacent structures that we actually just saw about six months ago over in the Harbor 22 freeway area. And then you also see, we have data that shows there's an increase in crime in the areas adjacent to that. So we are very much looking forward to taking advantage of this grant and allowing it to be a strong deterrent as we continue to help our homeless population. I do want to emphasize that we always lead with compassion, empathy, and outreach resources to our homeless community as we help them try to have long-term solutions to their plight. I will open it up to any questions, and I also have Sergeant Brown and Lieutenant Loffler, who are head of our special resource team, for any specific questions relating to those areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Kim?
I have a few comments, but I'd also be like to be the person to make the motion for this item. I think my colleagues and staff and the residents have heard me speak on this issue more than once now. I want to thank our police officers for the work that they've done to be creative, to find a solution to this. There are a number of times that I've had to call them, and they've pulled Caltrans out to clean the area around Harbor, Trask, and New Hope. It's never, it doesn't seem like it's ever going to get better. We've had residents come and complain about it, homelessness backing up into their backyards, causing a lot of different issues for them. And I know that the mayor and myself went out to the New Hope and Trask location right before they were cleaning it up, and just to see how folks were living. It breaks your heart, too, but it's also like, we represent residents of this city, and we have to find ways to also acknowledge the struggles that they're going through. And this is one of the things that we can have as a tool to help. As we build our navigation center, as we increase affordable housing and permanent supportive housing, wraparound services, mental health services, and continue to add tools to the belts of our police officers to assist this population, this is just one thing that we have to do in order to secure our neighborhoods and the residents of Garden Grove who, you know, work hard and pay their taxes and have their home to feel safe. It's unfortunate that those individuals didn't accept help, but we know unfortunately that sometimes it takes more than once. And I know that you guys will continue to do the outreach and help those as much as you can and to the best of your abilities. So I just want to thank you very much. I know the conditions out there aren't always great, and some of you guys get sick, some of you guys get hurt, and it's, it's sad to see. But I can't thank you enough for the service that you do to help keep our community safe and to help those individuals that really need it. So thank you. And I make the motion.
Stephanie, second.
I just seconded for discussion.
I just, first of all, thank you very much. I think this is absolutely needed. I know that the mayor and council member Nguyen were at that location, and then I think it was a second cleanup, where myself and city manager Lisa Kim, and I think several others, came out again to take a look at what was happening. I was there, I believe it was day two, and it was quite unbelievable that that was day two, considering the way that it, that it looked. Obviously, we want to lead with compassion, but at the same, right, we have a responsibility to our residents and our businesses. And there's a health and safety issue that is impacting these areas significantly. And so we have to do everything that we can to make sure that our businesses are safe, our residents feel safe, because they're being impacted and really facing the brunt of this day to day, especially in these issues like New Hope and Trask and that pedestrian bridge. I think a couple of the questions that I had was, if you could just give me an example of where else this fencing is, maybe in surrounding cities, so that residents kind of can have just a little bit of an idea of what, what to look for and what it will be like.
Yeah, currently, the Orange County Public Works has the similar deterrence fencing posted around the Orange County flood controls, so you can see them similar over off of Ward and Hazard. You can also see them off of Dale and Chapman. There's multiple throughout the city.
Okay, so it's the black fencing and fencing type that you can't stick your feet through? It's not like a chain link?
Correct. Yeah, it's, it's a black, thick-gauge, wrapped in PVC pipe that's anti-climate and deterrence fencing.
That's great. And then I saw that you talked about some landscaping deterrence or, or some type of paving and gravel. Well, is that also then used to just perhaps prevent other issues with, with camping or so forth in those areas then?
Yeah, it's, it's built to prevent encampments from being built, to make it more uncomfortable for those living conditions.
I appreciate the two-step approach there, and thank you for putting your lives and your health at risk every day out there. Thank you for all you do, and I definitely Thank you for all you do, and I definitely support this. I'll second if nobody else has.
Cindy?
I would like to take the opportunity to say thank to our Garden Grove Police and of course Officer Jepra for giving me the tour. And by taking that tour, you could see how important it is to have this fence, because we was there, and the fence was locked before, and they already cut it out. And, you know, we walked through, and we already saw all the people that are coming back to that same location. And the other two council members already talked about the compassionate and the health and safety issue, but also, you know, for the business around there, you could see that one of the building have kind of smoke or something that burning the outside area. So thank you for what, you know, you are doing to make us feel safety and knowing that you're going to be there to support the residents. So thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think this is a great tool that we can use going forward. I do have some concerns because people, you know, as the areas get covered with the fence, a lot of folks are gonna, okay, well, we'll just move on to the place that doesn't have the fence. And, you know, coming into my district, it's actually Westminster where those homeless encampments are. It's not Garden Grove, so we don't have a whole lot of say other than the times we cooperate with them to help, you know, clean out and stuff. But my only suggestion, I think this is great for the vast majority of the city. When you get a little to the west side, it kind of becomes problematic because I think you're going to start funneling them that way. So maybe a little email or something to Westminster, hey, check this out. Maybe Westminster might want to go down the same road and, you know, get some of this fencing as well. So anyway, good job.
Just real quick, I mean, so thank you very much for this. It kind of plays into everything we're doing over the last number of years, offering services, not only for homeless, but for our residents to have law and order. I call it tough love, you know. You can't just have lawlessness and people do whatever they want. You know, the taxpayers and the citizens of Garden Grove and the businesses are paying in their taxes to have a lively community for everyone. And by leading off with offering the homeless services, that's number one, right? So we're doing that. We're providing temporary shelters and places, and it's up to them to make that decision to go. So I hope they make that decision. But this leads into other places in the city that we need to do the same thing, and you guys are doing a great job in that. So thank you very much. Tough love and law and order.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, item six B.
Item six B is award a contract to Next Gen Design Builders, Inc. for the Central Cities Navigation Center, project number 135000, Construction Management Services. And the ladies from Community Development are going to be giving this report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you this evening is a consideration to award a contract to Next Gen Design Builders, or Next Gen for short, for the Navigation Center Construction Management Services. Recognizing the urgency for completion of the Navigation Center and meeting the obligations for the use of restricted funds and federal requirements, the city is looking for a construction management consultant with prior experience in construction management, project management, and in overseeing federal-funded projects. The consultant will be responsible for coordinating the design team and the construction general contractor, purchasing all fixtures, furniture, and equipment, and overseeing the entire construction project from pre-construction to closeout and turnover. The city of Garden Grove launched an extensive RFP for a construction management consultant services. We received formal responses from three proposers, including Next Gen. Proposers were interviewed and rated based on their understanding of the project and scope, their experience, professional qualifications, experience with state and federal procedures, and the Orange County Standards of Care for Homeless Shelters, and their interview presentation. Next Gen's proposal received the highest total points with a maximum of 100 points per raider and has been selected to be awarded the contract. Next Gen team has fifteen-plus years of experience in tenant improvement and is a certified firm to oversee federal and state grant projects. These qualities are paramount to the success of our Navigation Center build-out. Funding for this agreement does not require additional appropriation from the general fund. It is recommended that the city council approve the award of contract for the Navigation Center Construction Management Services to Next Gen, not to exceed the amount of $365,850. Appropriate $365,850 from the Navigation Center's budget to Next Gen per the Construction Management Services agreement. Authorize the city manager or her designee to execute the agreement, make minor modifications as appropriate on behalf of the city, and approve option terms and amendments. This concludes staff report. Staff and the Next Gen team are available for questions.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions, comments?
I'll move to approve it.
Awesome. Sounds good. Roll call vote, or I mean, call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, that takes us on to matters. We do have one agenda item listed under matters is item seven A.
Would you like me to introduce that for you? Item seven A is a discussion regarding proposed letter of commendation for Garden Grove veteran Giovanni Roman for his service as a volunteer combat medic in Ukraine. This is requested by council member Kim Nguyen, and you did receive her draft letter.
I would just like to read the letter into the record. Dear Mr. Roman, on behalf of the Garden Grove City Council, we would like to express our deepest admiration for your service and sacrifice as a volunteer combat medic in Ukraine. We were deeply saddened to hear of the injuries you sustained when an enemy rocket struck the Humvee you were in. Despite the challenges you faced, you demonstrated remarkable bravery and resilience surviving the impact and undergoing surgery to treat your injuries. Your dedication to serving your country and helping others is truly inspiring. You have already served in the Marines, worked as an emergency room technician at local hospitals, and joined the U.S. Navy on contract. When Russia's war on Ukraine began, you chose to leave the Navy and serve as a volunteer combat medic in Ukraine. Your commitment to helping others and your selflessness are a testament to your character and the values that you hold dear. You are a true hero, and your service and sacrifice will not be forgotten. We know that your journey to recovery will be challenging, and we want you to know that our thoughts and prayers are with you and your loved ones. We also want to express our support for your future aspirations. Once again, we extend our sincere appreciation for your service and sacrifice. You have our utmost respect and admiration. I would like to ask that my colleagues join in approving this letter that we can send to Mr. Roman for his bravery and his acts of service to this country and to this city.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
I have one question. Was he an actual volunteer, or was he working as a foreign contractor? Did he, I mean, was he going over there on his own dime, doing it for free, volunteering, or was he in that?
As far as I understand, he was a volunteer. I make the motion, and then. I don't know the extent to his injuries and how he's doing. The last I heard, he was still in the hospital. It's not likely that he'd be able to come here in person anytime soon, but I'm sure if and when that is an option, we can definitely look into that. Thank you.
Does that even require an action, or can we just give direction to? Okay.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, matters from council members. George?
Got a couple. First, I just want to congratulate our first, as far as I'm aware, probably the first in the county as well, Special Needs Commissioner, Ms. Jessica Knight. Tonight, we put her on admin appeals, and really, really glad to see that. I wanted to give everybody an update on the strawberry zest sculpture and how it's progressing so far, so you guys are aware. As you know, we approved the positioning in front of the fire station. Raising monies, we've raised $100,000 towards the construction. Jennifer Stewart is the artist who's going to be constructing, or actually, she's doing it right now as we speak. She's started the construction. We've already cut the first check for a little over $40,000 to the foundry. They want half the expense upfront, right? So Jennifer's dealing with the foundry, and she has leased out the space next to Azteca, the balloon, Happiness is a Balloon location, the front part of it. So she'll be building the sculpture there over the next six months. So if you're walking down Main Street, you can take a look in the window and take a look and see that, you know, how it's progressing and whatnot. So really excited to seeing that going forward. The Garden Grove Community Foundation has graciously co-sponsored the project. There is a link at their website for anybody who would like to contribute to the thing. We're going to, I'm going to be putting that out on social media and whatnot this week. So you'll start seeing that going on in hopes that we can raise a little bit more towards the fund. There's three levels of contribution that are listed there, but anybody could donate whatever they want. So if, you know, you only want, if you only can spare $25 or $10 or whatever it may be, you can go on the website and put that as well. So anyway, that's where we're at, and just wanted to let everybody know what the status is. Hopefully, we'll see that sculpture finished and installed, hopefully, by the end of fall.
I just wanted to mention that this past week, I attended the funeral of a kind of a pillar in our community Anaheim in Garden Grove, Jim Stovall. Jim and his wife Bobby really have been involved since the 50s, and Jim's family and his brothers have built a lot of motels in Anaheim when it was just starting. And without Jim and Bobby, the Gem Theater wouldn't be what it is today with their donations and their philanthropy that they've given over the years. And they're silent. They never, you never really hear about them. But I've known Jim a long time. My best friend is married to his daughter. And I grew up at the hotel business with another family that owned the hotels next door. So known him a long time, just the greatest guy you'd ever want to meet. You would never know that he was, you know, multimillionaire, businessman, and all these things. He was really very humble. He wanted to always make sure that you were taken care of and people around him were taken care of, his employees, his friends. He'll sadly be missed. He was about 85 years old, I believe, and just want to wish his family well. And for everyone to know that what a pillar in Garden Grove he was for their donations, for the love of the arts and music at the Gem. So he'll be missed.
Birthday girl.
Couple items I want to bring up. Maybe you could share the picture. So last week, I went to the public works service, and I did want to say thank you to Bill Murray and the whole crew for giving me a tour. So what happened in the form, the last couple weeks, we heard about, you know, the saving for the food waste we need to put in separate bowl or baskets. And so the last couple weeks, I just put in the little bowl, and every couple day, a day, and I have to bring it outside. So I heard our city been talking about, we have the cute plastic thing. And so I just called Bill and said, oh, can I come by and pick that up? And when I went there, and he just gave me a tour, it was amazing just to see. You look at the picture, all the car park very nice and neat in the maintenance office, and all the offices very neat, and everybody was so courtesy and so super nice. So I got a quick tour, and I did want to share with everyone the picture that I took from that event. And I encourage if anyone that need the container, please come, because it really cute, have all the design around it. So I took one for myself, one for my parents, too. So that's for the next couple picture, please. Second, because as a library advisor board member, represent for our council member here, there were two events at the library, and one was the peace school. I came, you could take, yeah. So there were so many kids at the library, they did an amazing job. There were so many people, the kids have fun doing activity, taking picture. And there was a little girl that probably, I don't know, a couple months old, climbing on the stair with a book in her hand. It was so cute. So just say congrats to the library for doing the amazing job. It were packed, like everywhere you walk. And the second event was the quick movie that they saw, the Little Saigon short movie. I came and I met with the film director, and a couple of my students came from, these are the students from Cassidy Fullerton, they came from San Diego and other places, came and take a look. And it was just very nice to see that they have a nice setup, and people were so involved and just getting to learn more about the thing that we have in Garden Grove City. So I just feel honored to be there. And then the next couple picture is about the non-smoker group. They came to, we had the meeting right on International Woman Day. And so we just had a quick picture with the lady. We was there for more than two hours. So for the people out there, smoker, if you need help, please reach out to them, and more likely, you're going to meet them here because they come here almost every week. Yeah, so that's in the team, that we just have a quick selfie in the front of the city, you know, the city hall floor, and we still there. Thank you. Next one gonna be, it's not in the picture, but I just want to say thank to our Garden Grove Police Department and Chief Amir. I want to share you this story because you're going to see how amazing our Garden Grove Police Department is. There was neighbor dispute. They contacted me via email. I got the email, and I sent it to them, reached out to the chief. The next day, the city, the resident sent an email back, said the chief came and took care of it, like he sent somebody, and took care of it, and the neighbor super nice to them now. I don't know what he did, but that's just amazing how it less than 24 hour. And so that's the first one. Second one was about a safety issue where that one of the business have, were afraid, you know, there were homeless and people around them. I mentioned that, I think there was an email from our city. The chief got the message. The next day, I already got the call from the individual, said that the chief already took care of it within 24 hour. And the last one that were fraud in our city relate to the property, somebody transferred the title that the owner didn't know, now they got the notice of 60-day vacate the property. And I reached out to the chief. The next day, the interviewer told me that the detective already reached out to them and working on it. But I just feel so amazing that now any city resident in our Garden Grove City know that you're part of this family. If something that happened to you, you don't have to fight along now that you have, you know. I mean, probably all this time it's like that, but I didn't know until now that I experienced and see that with my own eye. So I just want to thank you to the Garden Grove Police Department. And that's it for the event I attend. Two events that are coming up that I want to bring it up here. The one in the trade school that Councilman John and you and I want to do. So any of the trade school out there that would like to be part of it, whether want to participate or want to get more information, please reach out to us. And then the next event is a multicultural event that we want to honor our veterans. And so that one's still in work, and we'll have more about that. But I would love to have Council Kim Nguyen and Council Stephanie to be part of that group, and we're going to have fun. That's it for me. Thank you.
First off, I'd like to congratulate everyone who made the appointment on the different commissions. We had counted seven commissions with seven very distinguished individuals on each. I hope that my fellow colleagues have found on the list some people that they found deserving and they trust to serve. I myself did not make any pick, but that doesn't mean that I think these positions are not important. They're extremely important. I've been calling for people to put in, and we got over 100 people to put in, and the extended timeline gave a number of people an opportunity to put in. So I thank you, Councilwoman Kim Nguyen, for that extension, and Mayor to generously give us time. But of course, I pushed for a deadline, and this is perfect. We got our appointments, and I congratulate everybody, and I hope to meet them in service to our city and our residents. And I just want to give a shout out to everybody on this list. The names we've been, have been read into the record, and congratulation. And I look forward to meeting each and every one of our commissioners. Thank you for putting in, and thank you for your service.
Stephanie?
Thank you. Last week, the Association of California Cities Orange County went to Sacramento, and I was a part of that delegation. We met with key legislators, staff, and different officials discussing and sharing the challenges that we face here in Orange County, and then obviously having an opportunity to drill down a little bit more specifically to our individual cities, myself being able to advocate for Garden Grove. We talked about issues like housing, homelessness, crime, transportation, infrastructure, energy, and water. It was definitely a whirlwind trip, but I was just honored to have a seat at the table and to be able to advocate and represent Garden Grove. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. I unfortunately had. I unfortunately had to step down from my role on SCAG and OCOG as the District Eighteen Representative, which encompassed the cities of Garden Grove, Cypress, and La Palma, which means that they're holding, they're now opened for nominations for the election to replace my seat. They opened that up a few days ago, and the deadline to apply is tomorrow. So if any of my colleagues are interested, please note that you will have to lobby other cities to ensure that people show up to vote. I won last time by default, because no one else applied. And the time before that, I remember, I think I dragged Councilmember Beard, a former Councilmember Beard, and a few others to that meeting to vote for me. But we got outnumbered by the small cities, so I became an alternate. But again, the previous time, no one else applied, so I finally got it. This time, I imagine there will be a handful of people that would like to apply, although I don't have that confirmed. But if you're interested, just know it is a bit of a time commitment. You serve on OCOG, and then you serve on SCAG, and you get appointed, nominated, fallen told, to participate in a number of other policy committees and/or ad hocs. And I was at one point on like seven. And just because now we're transitioning away from remote participation, I could not make the same equivalent time commitment as a young professional and person who sits on council to make that time commitment to go to LA for SCAG, et cetera. But it took me a really long time to get to that position, so I was really devastated that I had to let it go. But I just, I couldn't make it work out, and I know that that wouldn't be, it would be just a risk to the city and to the other cities that I would represent. So if you're interested, please reach out to myself. I believe the clerk also has that information if you didn't see it. And lastly, I just want to wish my dad a happy early birthday. Happy birthday, Cindy.
Lisa Kim.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, I do have one announcement. I wanted to take this moment to reintroduce the council to our interim Community and Economic Development Director, Craig Beck. You met him earlier, actually sometime till end of December, when we brought forward the P Fall Contract to advance the P three project for our future public safety building. Craig was bottom board as our contract project management, project manager at the time, and now he stepped into the role as our interim director until that position is filled in the coming months. So I wanted to have Craig say a few words to the council.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, Mayor and council. I look forward to the opportunity to work in here in the city of Garden Grove. I've been driving around to try to get used to the neighborhoods and understanding a little bit about what's going on, and there's a lot of great projects happening in Garden Grove, so I'm excited to be just a little part of that. Timing worked out great. There was a staff retreat today with Community Development Team, and so I really got to meet the team a little bit more in such a short time. Good team. Lisa put together a fantastic group. I look forward to using my skills to help deliver a new public safety building and helping to transition Community Development to a permanent director. Thank you, and look forward to working with you all.
Thank you. General Counsel Omar, any need for a closed session, anything to report out?
Yeah, Mayor, earlier we did have two closed session items, both litigation, and there is no reportable action out of those two items. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, everyone, for tonight, and with that, we will stand adjourned until next time. Thank you.